To call the November seventeenth County Commissioners Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here. And I'd like to turn over an invocation and pledge of allegiance to Commissioner Billy Mills.
Let us pray. Lord, you already know our needs. Thank you that we have the freedom and the privilege to be able to pray to you at this moment and at this meeting. We've been asked by the people of this county to make a decision and represent the hard-working families that are able to make a living and that they'll be able to flourish. Lord, you control everything every day, so we place our trust in you. Give us discernment on these decisions that we make tonight. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
(inaudible).
All right, that's good. Now, any approval or adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, please.
Okay.
I would like to pull the item Consolidated Health and Human Services Board Appointments and table that until the second meeting in January so that the Health Board can meet that first Thursday of January, and then we would meet after that.
And that's item six B?
Yes.
And I got a motion from Commissioner Crump. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the Consolidated Human Services Board Appointments will be postponed till our second January meeting. Any other changes or to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve it? That was by Mr. King. Second by... Oh, second. Sorry about that. Commissioner Hatley and then Vice Chair King seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven a. I didn't have anyone to sign up for public comment, but is there any? Oh, yes, sir. Give us your name and your...who you live?
Randy Honeycutt.
I'm sorry?
My name's Randy Honeycutt. I'm from Stanley County. I'm requesting to make a power plant to make renewable energy from the 12 million pounds that's currently being processed through Stanley County Waste System. And if you allow me, I could, and further from here, show you the paralysis systems, the algae systems, the cleaning systems and stuff for the exhaust and as well as the renewable energy certificates of the jobs that could be made, as well as the tax dollars that could be made with this system. I've been working on it for 19 years. I'm a United States Marine. I worked in air with the F-18s, and my specialty was power plants that flew. And so whenever I got out of the military, I made power plants that were prosperous. And that's what I'm working on right now. And if you guys allow me, I'll show you. I'm requesting, if you'll allow me, some land, possibly at the landfill. There's lots of land out there, or possibly later, different areas, just whatever you guys are feeling the need for, and we could possibly talk about it on a later schedule.
So, how would you find this going off of that?
Methane, synthetic gas, paralysis of wood, paralysis of plastic, rubbers. It'd be going through a flow-through system. We're also taking and taking the food and process and sending it through gasification systems that are digesters and producing methanes. I'm currently doing that at Spring Lake Family Farms, and I've been doing that for about two years now. I was moving my plant to Rockingham, but if you guys allow me, I won't move it, and I'll build it here.
So, this is something that's been done before?
Oh, how's my process? My process is here, and it's able to make jobs for bodies. It's proven, obviously. And I just need somebody to put the action and the plan in the place, and I've been studying it for a long time. I went to Appalachian State for a short course in ethanol manufacturing. I'm capable of making high-proof ethanols for alcohol and fuel production. I'm able to make biodiesels off of bio-oils. I'm growing algae, and I'll be expelling the oils out of that, mixing them with methanol and potassium hydroxide to pull the glycol's off of it, which then we can make other things. So, it'd be not only making fuels, but it would be making alternative energies, as well as things such as detergents, fuels, jet fuels, diesels, fuels, ethanols. We can make feeds for our animals. There's a lot of stuff that could be done, and there's a lot of jobs that could be made.
Would y'all be entertained a session later, meeting with him?
Do you have a slideshow?
Well, I got a website on my Facebook. It's called PD Organics, like the PD River and organics, and we're all focused on organic stuff. But...
Y'all don't own any land in the landfill, that's owned by the city?
Yeah. But...
Do you approach the city?
I talked to the landfill, and they told me that I needed to come to a county meeting first and approach you guys.
Unless you want property, I mean, or you don't put a business...
I've...I could, if y'all had land, I could do that. If...I don't need much land, and these...
You got water or anything?
I got a business card in my pocket.
What's wrong with them anyway?
I make fertilizer off, and I'll be growing fish and using the fish waste and digesting it. And I get MPK levels. I work with NC State University, their digestion department. There's a lot going into this. Gabe Louder at Spring Lake Family Farms, and John Allman's been helping me. They went to NC State University for agricultural. And I just put a lot into this, and I hope you guys see that.
Mr. Honeycutt, I'm really not sure what you're asking us to do.
Just entertain that I could show you more into this, and if you guys have anything that you could really push my way in promoting us to start a company in Stanley County for it.
Do you have investors? Because you got...
I've got...
It costs...it will require capital.
I've had investors for...I've got over 150,000 invested so far.
How much money have you raised?
As of right now, I just got equipment.
Where did you get the equipment?
I paid for it out of my pocket as a United States Marine that gets disability out of the...
Do you have a list of your investors?
I have one in North Carolina. I mean, I have John Allman, Gabe Louder, Neil Martin, John McKnight, and me. And John McKnight's in Texas, and his family owns aircraft seating belts and signature plating, and he's a very well-educated person that's capable of helping promote a business down in that portion, which would bring not only proceeds from other locations to this location, because this is a company in this location. We're going to build national on a scale. It's a renewable energy, so we can get renewable energy grants that are being put out there.
Do you have a CPA that's helping you with your financials?
I have a CEO that has a master's degree in education, and she's...
No CPA?
I can get one of those. I have...
I mean, are you generating revenue currently?
Not right...not at this moment. I'm building fertilizer, but I have to get a Department Agricultural stamp. I have people using it, and they're really successful with it. It's really useful. Potassium's are needed for agricultural, nitrogens and phosphorus, and I can produce all of them.
Who's your customer base?
Right now, it would be, and I've talked to Stanley Tractor in Albemarle, Mooney's Field Mill. I've talked to Stanley Ag, the Ag in Millenport, Stanley, well, it's not just Stanley, but just agriculture for farmers. There is a big thing for farmers, and golf courses, vineyards, and farms.
But have...has any entity that you've mentioned purchased any of your product?
Not at this moment. I have to get...I was at Spring Lake Family Farms, and they set me up to get prosperous, and I currently bought land in Rockingham, but I don't want to move it down there. And I want to make here in Stanley County, but I have to have a location that I can get the Department of Agriculture to certify my product through, but I've got people using I've got pictures, I've got results, I've got lab tests.
Still not sure what you're asking us to do as commissioners?
As commissioners, well, if you have land, I would like to have some of that to make my company on.
And we don't. The landfill's owned by the city of Albemarle.
So, I would have to go through the city to talk to the landfill?
Is that what the city told you to come to?
Hey, the landfill.
You need to go see the city manager.
Okay.
His office is there at the City Hall.
Okay. Now, if y'all want to check my Facebook out so that you know that what I'm doing, you can see my gasifier making flames, and I ran the generation system off of it, so if you see it up here, that's my name's Randy Honeycutt, and I want to make America great again.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Now, item six A is the physical year 2425 audit presentation. Presenter, Mr. Alan Thompson.
Good evening to you. I'm going to try to get this up real quick. I might need some help here. All right, you made me feel better. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, there we go. You're the man. You're the man.
All right, thank you for allowing us to do the audit. We appreciate it. Hopefully, this will help. Main thing you hire us as an independent audit firm to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issue an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report, which is what you're looking for. In any reports that you receive from us, they probably still have draft on them. It's a nationwide problem right now. There's a compliance supplement that the Office of Management and Budget with the federal government has to issue before you can finalize anything that's a single audit. Unfortunately, they haven't been open lately. As a result of that, all the audits that are single audits in the state of North Carolina and really nationwide can't be submitted until they issue that final supplement. They issued what's probably going to be close to the final in August, and so we did everything based on that. We're not anticipating any changes, but the local government commission told us to set tight until that's issued or until they provide us further instructions. So, if you see drafts somewhere, that's why you're looking at a draft. It should only impact federal programs and what would need to be tested, so we're not anticipating the numbers to move at all. All we're anticipating is if something pops up that they want a certain program tested slightly different, that we'd have to come back and do a little bit different test on that to make sure that the federal funds were spent in compliance with that supplement. So, said a lot, really nothing should change, but I want you to understand why draft is on there. So, if you look at your screen there, and hopefully I can get it to do what I want it to do. You should be able to flip over to page one there. A little bit different wording in this presentation summary than in prior years. Some of it's all changed by the standards. I want to make sure I'm communicating that clearly to you. Basically, what all this says is we agreed on an engagement letter. Y'all are still responsible for your part. We're responsible for our part. We're not saying the statements are 100% complete, I mean, accurate. We're saying they're materially accurate. So, we're not aware of anything that's not 100% accurate, but that's just the nature of the beast. There were significant risks identified, which are the same risk identified in every audit. We do specific tests around those risks to try to mitigate anything there. We're unaware of any issues with either one of those risks identified. As far as significant accounting policies, one of the big things that came out this year is Gatsby Statement 101, which is quote compensated absences, which is basically accrue and sick leave and all the things associated with that. And you know, without boring you, we did it. Everything's hunky-dory. It didn't affect your general fund. It's a lot of computations, only to put a sick leave liability on your balance sheet. That's really what it was all about. But it was a big statement. Your finance officer did a great job helping us get through that. No challenges finishing up to do that. Significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit, there were none. There were no uncorrected misstatements. There were no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November 5th. We're unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. There were two small findings. Nothing serious on that, making sure the subsidiary accounts reconcile to the general ledger. There was a Medicaid testing issue. Medicaid has become challenging in the sense that we went from pandemic-era guidelines back to quote normal guidelines, which is a transition for everybody. So, there were a couple of things there that they're working to make sure we're all in compliance, which is we do 27, I think, it might be 28, of the 100 counties in the state. That's a challenge statewide in making sure everybody gets in compliance back to the old way, as opposed to basically if you apply, you qualify. So, we've got to get back to the testing part of that. On the numbers, in this first column here, 2025, we try to pull out, I won't say they're all the key numbers, but they're at least some of the key numbers. And then we put the four prior-year audits right beside it, and you can see there, your total fund balance and your general fund is 62,365. If you go back to 2021, that number is 40,57,000. Your unavailable fund balance is 9.9 million. Restricted and committed is 28.085 million. Total general fund expenditures is 95.3 million, and the fund balance available as a percentage is 54.97%. One of the interesting things you'll notice in that total fund balance there has risen 22 million approximately. Your percentage is up about 12% from the beginning of that because it's that mathematical equation. When you look on the next page, you'll see where your total expenditures have gone from 70.5 down at the bottom to 94.5. So, your fund balance is rising, and it's keeping up with the...the percentage is keeping up with the total expenditures in that computation. So, what that does is it makes sure that the county's financially solvent, it's in good shape if you need to issue additional debt, et cetera. So, overall, you're in good, really good shape there. Revenue's over and under expenses before transfers and contributions in general fund is a positive 2.9. The Greater Baden Water there is a minus 5,252. West Stanley is a minus 372. Stanley County Utility Funds a minus 29,994. Pining Point Water District's a minus 146, and Airport Funds up 198,449. Quick comment on all the negatives. You got depreciation, which is a non-cash expenditure in some of that. And when we get down to look at the cash in some of these, you'll see there was...some of that may have dipped, and that has to do with some of the projects that are ongoing, especially in the airport. Depreciation and amortization expense, which is next, and you basically can add some of those items back to the quote profit number, if you will, from the previous group. Then you see cash and accumulated depreciation in utility funds, almost 68 million, and total fixed assets, accumulated depreciation at 33.2, and then cash at $4.5 million. See cash in your general fund at 56.3 million. You go all the way back, that's a $23 million increase. I'm not going to read all those cash numbers, but the one thing I did want to point out there in the cash numbers, you can see a big drop in your airport cash, and that has to do with the projects going on there, so, which y'all probably know more about than I do. So, again, your fund balance, fund balance in your general fund, 62.3. Fund balance in Greater Baden at 3.7. West Stanley at 3.488. Stanley County Utility at 19.4. Pining Point, 300,000. Airport, 69.5. And you noticed a big jump in the airport. Basically, what you're doing is getting all the infrastructure continuing to add to that, and then other governmental's at 9.7. I will say this when we're talking about the utility funds, cash, depreciation, all that, what you're really trying to do on all these utility funds is make sure that they're cash flowing. You're not trying to build a big fund balance, although that comes over time. You're trying to provide a service so your cash flows, and so that's where the challenge is for you as a board, is making sure your pricing is arranged so that your cash flow and able to continue to provide the service. On the next page, you see the property tax rates, and then you see the collection percentages there at 98.45. Total property valuation is 7.544. And then you see total levy amount there at 46,159,000. You see your debt analysis there, total governmental debt at 32,136,000, and then your business type debt at 11,590,000, total debt at 43.7 million. And that's up if you look at it compared year over for the five-year period. And then you see a breakdown of your general fund revenues by department for a total of 97,475,000, and total expenditures there at almost $95 million. And looking at a few charts on numbers, you see whether you've got a really nice line on that page there for total fund balance, you're unavailable, which has to do with in a lot of cases with accounts receivable, et cetera. So, the timing on that makes them restricted. On the bottom, you see the...your percentage of fund balance available versus the group-weighted average, and where you've exceeded that in all five years shown. And then on the next page, you see at the top there, your cash balances and fund balances in a pie chart, and underneath that, the actual numbers with 100,248,000 in cash and 168.5 million in fund balances. Here on the next page, you see the group-weighted average and your county's collection percentage, and you can see it looks like in all five years, the county's collection percentage exceeded the group-weighted average, which is really nice. On the bottom, you see the, as a...just as a percent of total debt outstanding, that the governmental debt, 73%, and the business-type activities is at 27%. And on this next page, you see a breakdown of your general fund revenue, where avalorm taxes by far make up the largest percent at 47.11. And then on the bottom of that page, you see, or the next page maybe, you see your general fund expenditures with education, public safety, and human services making up the three largest of that. If you have a takeaway from what...from this presentation, what I'd love for you to take away is that you had an unmodified report, quote-unquote clean report, a good report. Financially, you're in good shape. That's what I'd love for you to take away from this presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you got of me, not just tonight. If you ever have a question, call the office. If I'm not there, tell them to give you my cell number, and I'll do my best to get you an answer to your question. And we appreciate you allowing our firm to do the audit.
Thank you so much. Has anybody got any questions?
Y'all have a great night.
Thank you.
That brings us all the way down to the consent agenda. Everybody had time to look over it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Allman.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion is to...all in favor? All opposed? Mr. Gary, seven zero. I pray for sound to what our board comments and announcements, and go to Mr. Mills.
I guess we'll not be back until after Thanksgiving, and just wanted to wish everyone out there happy Thanksgiving and the holidays coming up. We do have some high schools that are continuing to play in the state playoffs, and they'll be playing this Friday.
I'd like to extend also, I hope every citizen in Stanley County has a very good Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Afry?
Thanks, sir. This Thursday, the 20th, I think, yeah, we'll be having our tree lighting in Locusts. This Thursday, the 20th, I think, yeah, we'll be having our tree lighting in Locust. It starts from, at 5:00 and runs till 8:00. If you have time, it draws a lot of folks. We block off Center City right there in front of the government center, and they have a lot of vendors, a lot of things for the kids to do, so if you can bring your kids, your grandkids, and come on out and have a good time. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Crump?
No comment tonight.
Mr. Hatley?
Vice Chair King? Breaks it to me, and I did wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and having nothing else to do, we'll...
Make your motion adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. And second by Commissioner Crump. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Carrey, seven a. Adjourned.